Good evening, everyone. I'm Mayor McFadden. Welcome to our June monthly meeting. It's June 15th, 7:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and let's rise for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Oh, I'll conduct the roll call. Trustee Caster?
Here.
Trustee Shaw?
Present.
Trustee Share?
Present.
Mayor McFadden, present, absent. Trustee Brooke. Okay, so I'm gonna move right into minutes and reports. Other than to say, to remind everybody that we have a village election coming up. And we have trustee Casker and trustee Shaw running unopposed. And I would just like to say it's been a pleasure working with both of them. And for the last two years, they've played a critical role in what we've done. And I'm looking forward to another year and hopefully beyond that. And I want to remind everybody to please pick up your absentee ballot or show up on the 21st of June and cast your vote. Thank you very much.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. Okay, so let's start with reports. Jeff?
So we have been continually doing work at Weewaw Park. Put in a new black hole. Built some new anchors for the raft and readjusted. Done by someone else earlier. We've been working on patching areas where we've had water leaks. Picked up the roads where we've leaked. We installed a new water pump up at the Mount Farm Pump Station. When we turned the water on to start the pump up, there was a, we found a seal that must have got broken during shipping.
Oh, that's too bad.
So as soon as we get the new seal, we'll put that in and that'll be up and running. We also installed a few new sign down by the keep. We also installed a hose bib at the back of the keep for watering plants and.
When you say the back of the keep, so it's on the exit side?
No, it's where you come in.
Okay.
Right, right in the back of the building.
Oh, okay, great.
You walk in the back, there's an air conditioning unit.
Okay, so we can attach a hose there and hit the garden in front of the lodge as well as those plants we have there.
Yeah.
Terrific.
We also did some work, not work, but on the Weewaw Dam. In the spring, we have to put a few stop locks and to raise the lake level to what it should be for this winter season. Also, I was supposed to meet Monday with the paving contractor that got the county contract, but he couldn't make it. I'm meeting him tomorrow morning, mid-morning, to give us prices on a bunch of different roads.
And then you'll make your recommendation to the board?
Correct.
Would you like to do it earlier this year?
Yes, definitely.
So is, if we were to make a decision at the July meeting, would that be helpful? Or should we call a special meeting?
I will, when I meet with him tomorrow, let me see what his schedule is. If he's, you know, getting backed up.
If you have to lock him in now, we'll just, maybe I'll get the approval from the Burges to choose them with you or something like that. So, all right, it's in the budget. And like last year, what we did is we looked at the worst ones and just backed that right into the budget. Thank you. Anything else? Well, again, thank you for what you guys have been doing at the Weewaw. You also moved the slide and the toys.
Oh, yeah, we relocated the toys that were in.
Yeah, and it's just been great for the people using the Weewaw. It's really, really appreciated. Thank you. Chief?
Okay, so for the month of May, we had 281 calls for service. Three more vehicle accidents or property damage. As promised, we increased our traffic enforcement. And we issued 15 summonses and 19 warnings. And that's going to continue throughout the summer as traffic has increased. We responded to four fire calls, four intrusion alarms. We had four medical calls. We assisted the town police twice. We were assisted once. We patrolled 2,910 miles and approximately 841 vehicles came through the gate. So that's, it's starting to increase.
Do you coordinate with Elizabeth to charge people who've had more false alarms than they're allowed according to the code?
Denise is on that.
Denise is on that.
Every, every couple days, it seems like we're sending out a new letter.
What a shame. And would you like to make a report on the automatic gate, how it's progressing?
Yes, so the automatic gate, well, starting July 1st, because now the school's over. You know, the non-resident tags are not going to be on. People are going to have to stop and be bedded. And we're going to start taking those tags back, only that's for the non-res. You know, we're encouraging people to have business here that are here every day. We're encouraging them to get registered in the system. One issue that we've been having is somewhere from the time that they write their plate number down and it comes to Denise, it's usually the wrong plate number. So a lot of people are coming in saying, the gate's not working for me. And then we verify the plate and it's, they're writing down the wrong letter or the wrong number or something like that.
Right.
That's the only issue that we've been having.
Now, you promised me you wouldn't say that about my cars.
I'm not going to say who.
Okay, thank you.
One other thing that I would like to mention is I had an officer recently attend a five-day training course and he's now certified as a child passenger safety seat technician. So we're gonna, it's a free service for residents to install and inspect car seats. The National Highway Traffic Safety Administration states that about 46, 47% of car seats are installed in property. So utilize the service. Now, let, let, well, Evie just attended the course. He's certified. He works every weekend, Saturday and Sunday. So if we come down and we'll afford you a seat the right way.
Yeah, one final follow-up on, on the gate. So now that school's over, other than the people that live in the park and administration's over, I imagine you can now deactivate those cars from the system. So that they can't, the, the parents can't have access.
Correct.
During the, the summer.
Correct.
Okay.
Denise has already done that.
Thank you very much.
When she put them in, she gave them a certain date. And that's what's good about that system is we can put dates and times.
Okay, thank you. John, do you want to give any report?
Oh, yeah, just briefly, we have three matters before the village justice. They're all being overseen by the village attorney and, and they are a little slow, but they are proceeding. The Pays project on Tower Hill Road is going well. So is the Rifkin project on West Lake Road. We have a number of other items that are happening on the Nicholson's construction of a pool started about two weeks ago. Harris 71 Laurel Lodge Road received the variance from the BZA for a side guard setback. They're scheduled to return to the bar for final approval. Greddy at 32 Lookout Road framing new interior walls is completed. Insulation is almost finished and the finished rough-in inspection is done. That's 32 Lookout Road. Klein at 130 Continental Road. They're proceeding pretty well on the interior renovation of the home. And Stetzenko and Krantz, 18 Patterson Brook Road went to the Board of Architecture Review regarding window and door and driveway changes. And that project is proceeding well. We also were in touch with a real estate agent who's not familiar with the village code. And I had to notify them regarding our requirements or that we don't allow open houses essentially. So, and from best I can tell, they complied with our, our request. That they don't allow people just to drive into the village.
By appointment.
By appointment. They have, somebody has to meet them at the front gate and then bring them back to the front gate. Under miscellaneous items, met with Jeff Foss to develop a project list and schedule, you know, for the next few weeks. Working obviously with the mayor regarding the Weewaw Park setup for the summer. We successfully were able to close East Lake Road for a few hours to allow the owners at 154 East Lake Road to cut down some large trees. Started to prepare a list of surplus equipment that we'll auction off hopefully within the next month. We have four or five items right here and we'll go down to the DPW and see what else we can get rid of that we haven't used in some time. And a handful of other items, but all fairly positive.
Are you gathering quotes for the steamer?
Yes, I, we have one quote for a steamer and I sent a request to the state to see if they have any items on state bid. It's kind of a particular item. I couldn't, Jeff couldn't locate anything on the state bid. So I sent them.
One ten. And will it be on wheels?
Yeah.
That's good, so we can bring it to different areas if we need to.
It's a fairly large unit. I mean, it's mobile, but it's a fairly large unit. So that's it pretty much. In summary, we do have a request from Jack Perna on Lookout Stable Road for a road cut.
Let me see, I think I have that under new business. Yeah, that's nine E. Why didn't you describe it to, to the board, please?
Yes, Mr. Perna purchased a vacant lot at the end of Lookout Stable Road. The lot does not have any official driveway or a road cut. In accordance with the village code 83.1, the village board has to approve any road cuts. Also, Mr. Perna has provided evidence regarding a hardship that connecting to the village sewer system is cost preventative. And he's requesting permission not to connect to the village sewer system and to construct a septic field on site that has to be approved by the Orange County Health Department and the village engineer.
What's your recommendation in terms of approval?
Um, I recommend that the village board approves both items.
Thank you. What, do you want to also briefly discuss the road cuts at the Tuxedo Club, which comes up also in new business?
Yes, last week I received an email from the club manager that they've decided to forego the majority of the changes that they had proposed before the Board of Architecture Review last year. They'll only be proceeding with the work directly in front of the main entrance to the club. And with that, they are modifying the road entrance way. So now there'll be actually two entrances or two cuts. And that also should have Board of Trustees approval.
And you recommend that we approve that?
Yes, I don't see any difficulty in doing that. They are not increasing or decreasing any site distances.
Now, I believe it's going to have conditions that approve them.
The road cut will have a condition that the plan that they're presenting matches the plan that they presented to the Board of Architecture Review.
Okay.
Approximately a year ago.
Okay, I see that we have that resolution. Okay. Now, in terms of minutes, any other reports? You wanted to mention something about a job opening?
About, well, yesterday I had the pleasure of going to the racetrack and taking a walk with Chu Yin. And it's such an oasis of calm going in there. Beautiful to look at. And if you just sit and listen, the birds are chirping. It's just very, 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 very nice.
Village office there?
Oh, yes, please. But I don't think we'd be welcome, unfortunately. But they, I just wanted to just get the word out about it. It's just such a beautiful place to visit. And they're always looking for people to help out with more of the physical end of things like weeding and planting. And even though that may sound like a chore in a place like that, it's not. It's just very, very nice. So you could experience the racetrack and do something very worthy and good at the same time and good for the community.
Thank you for sharing that.
So if anybody is interested, if you don't mind, I'll just say the email address to contact would be TP, as in Tuxedo Park, tptreboard@gmail.com. Thank you.
tptreboard@gmail.com?
Yes.
Terrific, thank you. Now, in terms of minutes, I don't know if you ever did have a chance. You sent out one set of minutes, but not the other, correct? So which, is it May 18th or May 26th that we're approving? Okay, so, okay, so I'll just alert everybody on the consent agenda. Seven B approved minutes from May 18th, 2022. Okay, let's review the consent agenda, please. Oh, I'm sorry, public comments. Does anyone on the Zoom call have a comment they'd like to make? Okay, comment section is closed. Let's move on to the consent agenda. We have add all written reports to the permanent record approved minutes from May 18th, 2022. Authorization to hire machine technician George Rigerio to work on Election Day for 175. What's that all about? You added that, yeah?
He's the machine technician. We had him last year as well. And I don't get that information later until closer to the election day. And that's why it's the last one that we do, yeah.
And with D, do you have a?
So, um, that basically, we've already picked the people to work. They've already agreed to it and we have the alternates. But every once in a while, something happens, the day of election, something unforeseen and somebody cannot show up. So just in case we have to make a last-minute substitution that I can pick anybody from the list, they're all qualified and.
Terrific. Thank you for the explanation. Then we have authorization to renew Vimeo contract for next year at $4,95.54. Anybody have any questions about that?
And what do we use?
We post all of our meetings. And I believe that this new law we might be passing also requires that other boards post it. And they're supposed to have agendas and all this stuff on the website, so we'll see. And then we already did F, everybody, so let's cross that out. Any questions before I call the resolution? Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda, letters A through E. May I have a second, please? All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to old business. Now, if you don't mind, Josh, I'm going to ask you to just speak briefly about what this is. We're going to be scheduling a public hearing for 6:50 July 20th in the village hall. And by Zoom, of course, to have a discussion regarding draft local law five, a local law creating community choice aggregation program. The liaison to that program is trustee Share. So I'll just ask him to briefly describe for everyone what that is.
Great. And our lawyer can help clarify if I mess up any of it. But it's basically a law that will allow us to purchase power, the focus being on renewables, renewable power on an opt-out basis, so we can basically aggregate our community purchasing power. The town recently just passed this. It doesn't obligate us to do anything. It just gives us the option to go down that path if we so choose. I don't know, Brian, if you want to add anything?
I think it was a pretty good summary. It's really just that, ability to aggregate communities. Sometimes it's done at a county level where the various communities participate together and, you know, work with a particular consortium.
Now, I'll add that we've so far had two presentations.
That's right, Jeff Demansky.
Jeff Demansky, who presented to the town, and that was at the last meeting. And also, what's the name of Charles' company?
Charles, it's Good Energy.
Good Energy also gave us a presentation. And whether we look at a third or not, I'm not sure. But when the time comes to it, we'll have the, the second presentation available to the public.
Can I say one thing, Mayor?
Absolutely.
To do with the program.
That's right.
Unless there's a real reason for it, I would recommend that we schedule these public hearings at seven o'clock. I'm not sure why the village or why they've done it at 6:50, if there's some reason.
There's some mayor that is just pissing me off. I don't know why he's doing it. So you agree with me? Seven o'clock?
That makes sense.
Absolutely. Thank God, someone's stepped in and straightened that former mayor out. Yeah, unbelievable. All right, so be it resolved that the Board of Trustees schedule a public hearing for 7:00 PM on July 20th, 2022 in the village hall and by Zoom for draft local law number five, a local law creating a community choice aggregation program. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, a resolution to approve draft local law number four. Who did that? Use of video conferencing for municipal meetings. So does anyone have any questions before we do that? Okay. Yep. Nope, nope, it should be five. Yeah, it should be five. Should be six.
If you don't mind me saying, the, you have draft laws and then when they become final, they're laws. And the numbering is different sometimes. In this case, they're different. So we're up to, that was draft local law number four. The aggregate is draft local law number five. But once local law number four becomes final, it's local law number five.
So what would you like me to use for the video conferencing one? What number?
It's draft local law number four.
Four.
Yeah, sorry, when you're adopting now, right?
Right, and when you adopt it, it's number five.
So your resolution now is going to be adopt, so it's not draft. So you're going to be saying a motion to, a resolution to adopt local law.
Six, five.
Number five, yeah, no longer draft. Thank you.
Be resolved, Board of Trustees approve draft local law number five.
Local law.
Local. Strike draft, local law number five, use of video conferencing for municipal meetings. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right. Thank you. Okay, now, before we move on. Tinka, myself and John and information from Elizabeth. We have gotten in a quote to counter the company Marshall and Sterling that we've been using for 10, 20 years. I'm not exactly sure.
All right. The resolution for the rules and procedures on that, that follows that local law, we need to do a resolution now.
Let's do that. Why don't you read that?
Yeah, I'll read that if somebody just wants to adopt the motion. Sorry to interrupt that. This will be a resolution to adopt the rules and procedures for video conferencing as presented to the village board to be effective on the same date as local law number five becomes effective.
Dot that. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
That was listed as B in the, okay, thank you, Brian. After that, I hope I can put this embarrassing last few minutes behind me and move on with a bit of confidence. All right, so, so the, several meetings ago, we discussed that we are going to be getting a quote against our current insurance company. Marshall and Sterling is the, is the, the office that administrates Argonaut, which is the insurance itself, insurance company. And we did it because it's our fiscal responsibility to do that as fiduciaries, to see if there's going to be a difference, to see if there's differences in coverage and so forth. So we took several months to carefully assess, provide information and so on to travelers. And they came in about $30,000 less. I strongly recommend that we switch carriers. Does anyone have any questions?
So did you compare?
Yes, we, we, yes, we did it. I did a comparison matrix, which I sent out. We're getting additional, I'll just give you one example. We have lifeguards, even though it's a third party. We also have the town camp. And we are now covered for any incidents that might happen between a counselor, a lifeguard and an individual camp member or a member of the Weewaw. So we're covered for that. And unfortunately, well, our other company did not address that. Another example would be that while both organizations offer insurances per building, what I liked about Travelers was that they said, look, we're going to raise the coverage you have on these buildings. Because the cost of replacing these buildings partially or wholly is now much, much larger with inflation. And with the cost of steel, that's 50% up, et cetera, the supply chain. So they increased it in anticipation that if there was a problem, we'd be in better shape. The other organization didn't. And we would find ourselves short if we had to replace. So, and there's many examples. But I highly recommend it. I think the service is going to be excellent. The, the way that they asked for information and the amount of information that we provided was eye-opening, I think, for all of us in terms of understanding our assets and how the insurance works and so forth. So I think this is going to be terrific moving forward. I know that they're very interested in the account. And they want to, you know, work with us and take us to the next level and so on and so forth. But, yeah, I'm excited about it. How do you guys feel?
Sounds great.
Chris? Can I just, can I just add, I think the fact that we're getting a million dollars of cyber insurance up from $100,000 is, is a very big deal, especially in today's day and age. And cyber insurance is incredibly expensive. So the fact that you guys are able to negotiate a deal of quite a savings to the village with all this extra coverage is, is, you know, quite an accomplishment.
Well, thank you very much. To the team, that goes to the team. Um, that said, be resolved that the Board of Trustees approve insurance company Travelers to replace our existing carrier. May I have a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Chris? In favor? Your?
Yes.
Yes.
I saw a little yellow thing when I said I, but.
Okay, sorry. Okay, I think I saved my reputation. All right, new business. This is regarding the sewer rates. As you may recall, we passed a local law in the spring which called for the formation of a sewer fund. And one of the aspects of that was that we would by resolution pass rates. And thank you, Brian, for setting us up. Now, I recommend that we take the advice of the consultant and go with option three. Does anyone have any questions or concerns? Okay. Yes, where are we? Oh, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve, oh, no. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve sewer rates in option three, recommended by Amawak Consulting Corp., LLC. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have.
I'm sorry, Mayor, just to clarify, it's 3A.
3A, thank you. I'll read that. I'll reread that. Thank you. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve sewer rates in option 3A, recommended by Amawak Consulting Group LLC. May I have a second? All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Okay, we have a accounting firm that we're very pleased with. This, I think, will be our third or fourth year. Cooper Arius. And they've sent us the engagement letter at 19. Do we know what it was before?
Check. I don't know.
Okay, so should we wait on that? I assume it's, I assume that, yeah, if you can. Okay, I'll move on. The installation of a 25 mile per hour sign on West Lake Road near Summit. Now, is that near the Hennessy House?
It's very close to the Hennessy.
Oh, or you would do it by the Hennessy or up on Summit?
We want to do it between Summit and Hennessy, so we can find a location.
Is that a bad spot?
There has been an increase in accidents. And, you know, it's, it's downhill. People do speed there. Now, the school's out, there's not as much traffic going through there, but still, it is a, it has been a trouble spot.
So you recommend it?
I recommend it.
Okay. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the installation of a 25 mile per hour sign on West Lake Road near Summit. Okay. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the installation of a twenty-five mile per hour sign on West Lake Road near Summit Road. May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, can we have a quick discussion on that?
Yep, yes, yes.
Now you vote on it, is approved?
Well, I mean, it's a suggested.
Yeah, I was just gonna tell you something after you voted.
Okay, yes, yes, Chris.
Uh, we're talking to the yellow twenty-five M P H sign?
Yes, sir.
Not a speed limit, okay.
It's a non-enforceable sign. It's a suggestion, but yes, good question, Chris.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
So I was just gonna share with you, there is a bill, I know it passed both houses, like right now in a village, you you can only set an area speed limit. But they don't need these linear signs. If you've put like on the outskirts of the village a sign that says, for example, village speed limit, right now it can only be thirty. So there is a bill that passed both houses. I don't know if it's been delivered to the governor. Allow the village to do an area speed limit of twenty-five. Right now, if you want twenty-five, you have to do what's called linear posting and put it on a specific street. If this bill gets enacted, then you will be able to set, if you want, twenty-five as the village's speed limit. And then all you have to do is make sure you cover all the entrances to the village, and those are the only signs you would really need.
Oh, so we could get rid of all interior signs?
You really could, as long as you cover the incoming streets with a area speed limit twenty-five at that point, that'd be so great. Yeah, so I'll keep you posted if it.
Thank you very much.
I think that, I think that's what we have.
Scoofus is running for Congress.
Oh, yeah, I heard that.
No, no.
Alright, so Elizabeth just reported that last year, uh, Cooper Arius was eighteen thousand. This year, they're asking a thousand percent increase to nineteen.
A thousand dollar increase.
What did I say?
A thousand percent.
Uh, I said, we'll check the tape. Elizabeth, do you, what do you recommend? I mean, how how is, how do you think their services are? I find them to be terrific.
Yes, I think they're responsive.
I find them to be very responsive. John?
Yeah.
Yes, I don't have any trouble.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, do you have any questions, Chris? Okay. Uh, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees engage Cooper Arius for two thousand twenty-two audit at the cost of nineteen thousand dollars. May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you. Alright, next on the agenda is a resolution to approve the renewal of village subscription to I C L E I. Uh, and that is what, six hundred dollars? Yeah.
Our bill was three hundred, then I thought maybe that was the town and us. So, and I just didn't get a chance to look into it.
What is it?
This, this little thing that I put there was for you to look up. So we got to have that mentioned.
Do you know anything about it?
Um, I, I don't.
The program?
I am checking. I don't.
Oh, I, okay, I I do know what this is. It's gives us the access to a software program that we can plug in exhaust numbers, mileage of cars. Uh, you know, it's it's all about understanding how much energy we're using as a village and using this program to calculate it. Uh, it's a wonderful tool that Jim Hayes says he really needs. Um, I know that the last year they've used it extensively. And so I would recommend that we do it. Um, I'm gonna say as long as it's under a thousand dollars, since we don't know a number.
And I can add to what you just said.
Please.
Because I pulled up the email. So I guess Jim and others have used, Jim Hayes and others have used, that was the past year to help calculate greenhouse gas emissions for the base year of two thousand eighteen. Uh, and during the coming year, it'll be used to make forecasts, develop a climate action plan for the village government operations and the community at large.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Alright, so uh, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the renewal of the village subscription to I C L E I on the condition that the renewal is under one thousand dollars. May I have a second, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, John recommended that we accept Jack Perma's request for road cut and septic. Before we move forward, do any of the trustees have a question for John?
Yeah, I do. And I I meant to call you earlier and I didn't. Does this lot go through a site plan approval?
Uh, yes, it's currently before the Planning Board and the Board of Architectural Review.
Okay, um, so can can we make a conditional approval based on any changes they recommend? I I just, I feel like we don't, we don't have a whole lot of information that's gonna go through a lot of expertise.
Right.
For, you know, final approval.
No, you're right. We're caught between a stone and a hard place because next meeting, they'll already have that information. So we're trying to fast track that. But yeah, we, let's make it conditional.
Yeah.
When it matches the existing site plan.
Yeah, if the planning board brings up things that we haven't considered, I'd hate to, you know, put them in a in a corner.
Right, right. I agree a hundred percent.
Now, is there any way to turn the volume up for him?
Just a bit light.
So John?
Yes, sir.
Do you think that's acceptable to put a condition on it, that it matches the?
There's nothing to match. We can make it consistent with the, the Planning Board approval, that they would also have to review the septic, which our engineer would.
Condition of?
Uh, the condition of not having to connect to the.
When is this going before the board? That the Planning Board and all that?
Um, it'll go before the B A R, the beginning of July, and probably the end of July, the Planning Board.
Okay, so why don't we wait till July? Is that a problem?
No, no.
Okay, because that will resolve all of our concerns. Uh, is everyone in agreement?
Or, I mean, honestly, we can delegate that authority to the Planning Board based on our last law.
Right, we can do that as well. Um, so uh, I think we should.
If I can say, I mean, the the issue that I think is before the trustees is the matter of the hardship.
Oh, the hardship.
Uh, that Mr. Perna has submitted evidence signed by a licensed engineer that the cost to put in a septic pump projector system would cost approximately, I think it was two hundred and two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Uh, the sewer from Mr. Perna's property to the closest connection point was approximately eight hundred feet. Uh, the reason for the expense and the cost to do a septic field, as Mr. Favella, an engineer hired by Mr. Perna, has signed to, is twenty-two thousand five hundred.
Right.
So the real issue before the trustees is this a hardship worthy of granting this exception?
So we could certainly separate those out.
Sure.
And uh, I think that is a hardship. And I would support giving, granting that hardship. I'd like a proper resolution, though. Um, maybe, Brian, you could help me write out a resolution with John briefly, well, while I move on.
Okay.
And just to make sure I'm covering everything.
Should, again, though, this is gonna go in front of the Planning Board again, and we're gonna have our engineers look at this. Does it make sense to just wait for our engineer to concur that, yes, they're not missing anything that's really gonna cost that much?
Well, let's decide. What do you want to do? Do you want to wait on both?
John, it sounds like, I mean, it sounds like we can wait, but.
You can.
Yeah, is there a reason to wait? Let's just get everything in the resolution that Chris is referring to.
Yeah.
And pass that, not the road cut, but the septic. We don't want them thinking that they're gonna have to come back and they might not get it. That's kind of the customer service aspect.
Well, that's, that's why I've advised the applicant at this point that he really needs to seek these approvals, the road cut and the sewer, otherwise no sense going back to the Planning Board or the bar.
Right. So.
I, I agree. Let, you know, conditional on the Planning Board.
Somebody, somebody write it up for me and we'll pass both.
Okay.
I, I wrote it up. Did you see what I wrote?
There are two resolutions.
I did write them.
On the next page.
Up first, then I put Jack Perna's, the second page.
Oh, okay.
The last, the last one, I think, is the sewer.
Yeah, I just wrote it there.
Okay. Road cut and, John, thank you. Wow.
Be resolved.
That was quick. I didn't even see you stapling it to my back. Unbelievable. Okay. But does it address the conditional aspect?
Um, I did put on their approval from the Health, Orange County Health Department and the village engineer. If you want to add the Planning Board, that's fine.
Yeah, okay. That's the road cut.
The last one on the, we read it.
Now, we want to say doesn't, it says previously approved by the Board of Architectural Review and and yeah.
Well, that's one you got from the, this is John's.
This is John's.
John, you wanted to say conditioned on the approvals determined necessary by the building inspector?
I would cover it in, and I can assure you that would include the health department, the village engineer, and the planning board.
Here, just mark that up for me, in case we miss anyone that we covered. You just earned tonight's stipend. You're man. Amazing. Set both of them up. Good points, Chris. Thank you. Record.
That'd be great.
I mean, and we're taking our time.
I agree.
Thorough job.
That's amazing.
That I.
So, did you write in the resolutions, John, where you want me to add your name according to the building inspector? Yeah, I do, because I want to get it right.
Yeah, the Tuxedo Club is only going back to the Board of Architecture Review. That's the one on the bottom of that. And then the top of the next page.
Okay, so let's do the resolution first on the road cut for Jack Perma.
Sure.
Okay.
Next. No, no, I think it's right there.
Oh, oh, sorry.
It's okay. Uh, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees, in accordance with Village Code Section eighty-three dash one, permit required. The village board approves the addition of one additional road cut next to the existing road cut located at the main entrance.
That's for the club.
Yeah.
I have the wrong title there. The wrong title.
Okay, okay. Alright, the wrong title. See, I'm not the only one, audience. Okay, so which one is it?
That's the, that's the Perna for the septic.
Right, and where's the perma for the, I mean, where's the Perna for the the road cut?
That's a good sign. He made, he made the right point.
I think this is really important to get that sewer information out, because lawsuits can come flying if you don't use transparency.
I agree.
And uh, so we went above and beyond.
Sure.
Jeff, you don't have to hang out. Yeah, you know that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Appreciate what you guys are doing.
So I don't know if you want to tell the audience at some point that Monday is a holiday, it's a federal holiday for Juneteenth.
Is it in our annual?
Yes.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll deal with that. It's a federal holiday?
Yes, it's a federal holiday. The people you guys were wondering.
No problem.
They had off. I said, I'm sure you.
It depends on if it was put into our annual.
Sorry, Tisa, but request onto Lookout Stable Road, just add that. I struck out the part for the club, just add, it's a road cut request.
I'm sorry.
Alright.
Alright, if I may, uh, this is for the road cut for Jack Perna, Lookout Stable Road. Be it resolved that in accordance with Village Code Section eighty-three dash one, permit required. The village board approves the road cut request onto Lookout Stable Road for the lot owned by Jack Perna.
Thank you, John. That's acceptable to us. May I have a second?
Aye.
Aye.
And lastly, this is for the connection of the sewer system hardship. Be it resolved that in accordance with Village Code Section seventy-eight dash five, connection to public sewer required. The village board approved the hardship request submitted by Jack Perna, provided the septic plan is approved by the Orange County Health Department, the village engineer, the building inspector, and the planning board.
Thank you, John. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, John, since you're doing so well, why don't you just explain the club and what we're doing with the road cuts?
Tuxedo Club manager sent me an email last weekend advising me that they will only be paving the existing uh, delivery access point. They will not be modifying the delivery access point, nor will they be modifying the club employee parking lot. Uh, but they will proceed with the plan that was approved over a year ago for the main entrance way to the club. Uh, the major difference there, which requires permission from the trustees, is they'll be adding one extra exit or entrance.
Okay. Uh, would you like to read the resolution?
Be it resolved that in accordance with the Village Code Section eighty-three dash one, permit required. One additional road cut next to the existing road cut. Tuxedo Club, provided the plan, revised plan, matches the plan that was previously approved by the Board of Architectural Review.
And we'll accept that, John. Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
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 Great. Okay, terrific. Alright, let's move on to budget transfers. And before we do, uh, John recommends that we move something from the general fund to the sewer fund. Did you have an amount in mind?
You know, doing some rough calculations, since we will not really have any major revenue at the end of October, so we have to support the system from now till at least then. I recommend that we we move fifty thousand from the general fund to the that we created.
Very good.
Look at things November first to see.
So do you want to put that in your other resolutions? Moving fifty thousand from the general fund to the sewer fund as part of our budget transfers?
Sure.
Thank you. And do you have other budget transfers?
Uh, no, I do not.
Okay, so would you like to make that resolution?
Be resolved that the board approved the transfer of fifty thousand dollars from the general fund to the sewer fund.
Thank you very much. Uh, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Um, so I would like to thank those that attended our public meeting. Uh, the board is going to go into executive session to discuss litigation, a new employee hire, the P V A contract negotiations, and several water accounts. Um, and then we will be returning, if you'd like to stand by. Uh, so, thank you very much for attending. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees exit the public meeting and move to executive session. It is seven forty-seven. May I have a second? All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, John, let us know when the recording's off and.
Do you want to put them all in the waiting room for this? Well, you have.
I don't think you made me co-host, so I.
I did.
Before you had Chris Castres.
Chief, thank you. Oh, yeah, for the P V A, sure. Right? Yeah, yeah. Invited guests. Let's start with the P V A when we're available and ready. When I get the word.
Let Brian change.
Alright, I got, um, it's the waiting room, so it's just the meeting room, myself and.
Because we are recording, all recording stops.